View Lobby, okay.
All right, I'm back. What do you need me to do? I got some people in the lobby, it looks like.
Yeah, and I, right, there's this, my screen is frozen with it says person is, Menden resident is in the lobby. And I, I said-
I see that.
And I, okay.
I see that as well.
All right.
So that whatever that, that, that person is just admit, yeah, that, that whatever it is, they must have got out, that's just stuck. Not to worry.
Okay.
I just, I just clicked to admit them.
So it looks like it's recording already? And who are we waiting on? Mark? Can you not hear me?
I can hear you.
I can hear you, Lonnie.
Okay.
Sorry. Who has all those children in the background? Lonnie?
Yeah, sorry, softball game.
It's all right, just.
Those are children, he's at the steakhouse.
Shh. No one's at the steakhouse. We're all in different places.
Are we just waiting on Mark, or?
Mark's here, right? We're here, so then it's... Do you want me to try to find the thing to read, or should we just make a general statement? I think.
General statement's fine.
Okay, uh, do you want me to do it? I'll just-
We're meeting, we're meeting remotely.
Yeah.
Since we can meet remotely.
I'm texting Mark, can you speak? Are you available to talk? Where are you? He's waiting, he says. Does that mean you're in the lotway?
Said that I was waiting for the meeting to start, so I closed out and tried again.
Okay. Here we go. Do you want me to make a statement, or are you gonna do it, or Lonnie?
You, you can do it.
Oh, sorry, Cindy just texted me. Um, due to the governor's executive orders related to COVID and uh, the changes that were passed about a month ago, we're still allowed to have remote meetings. Basically, this change means that every vote that needs to be taken tonight will be a roll call vote. Um, the other things will tell you is that everyone should keep their phones remote and muted, um, and that we will, um, you have to wait to be called on for the chair to recognize you, and we will try to do that as much as possible. This meeting will feature public comment. Let me know, did I miss anything?
That's good, thank you. I would also add that, um, if you would like to speak at any point, if you could just try to use the rain, raise hand feature, that would be helpful as we go forward. Do we have, we can't see most of the people on here, so do we have Lonnie and Mike? Okay.
Yeah, I'm here.
Great. Okay, so let's start with citizen statements and petition. None. Correspondent to the board. Now, we have recognition of Elena Brugo, but is Elena on here, or? Hold on, let me look. I know the request was to have Rep. Murray on the meeting, so I'm not sure if that got to Rep. Murray. And if he's not, we're skipping it in one second. Nope, I don't see him. Okay. Consider Nettmuck Gridiron Club for fundraiser at intersection of Route 140 and North Ave for Saturday, August 14th, rain date of Saturday, September 18th, from 9:00 to 12:00, 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. This is a typical request, and we've typically been approving of these fundraisers. Any comments from board members? Is Mike Morali on this call?
He was.
Doesn't seem like he is now.
I have no comment, but I, yeah, I'll make a motion, um, as presented.
Okay. Hold on, one second.
Question, please?
Uh, yep, name and complexion, but-
Andy Fisk, 101 Blackstone Street. Uh, you state, you stated North Ave at 140, I'm just curious where the location is.
Uh, that's a, that's a mistake, it's, it should say, uh, Route 16.
Okay, that's what I thought, just wanted to be sure, thank you.
Thank you. Um-
Mike's lost his internet, Mike, Mike lost his internet, he's working on it, he just sent a text, so if we want to just press forward with these little motions, let's go.
Great, so, uh, second that, all in favor?
Tenny, oh, aye.
Real aye. Okay. Uh, let's see, what do we have next? Sign the Blackstone Valley Partnership for Public Health Grant Agreement. I believe we have multiple board members from the Board of Health here.
Hi, Mark, it's Miss-
And we have Missy, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Doing well. Would you like to guide us through this?
Yeah, so what I can tell from the phone numbers, um, and from the video, uh, Chairman Fisk is on the line, Vice Chairman, um, Greenberg is on the line, and so is member Tom Fickner, so we're all present, um. So if you want me to go ahead and explain what this all is about, I'd be happy to.
That would be great, thank you.
Okay, so, um, back in 2019, the state did a study about local public health. It was finalized, uh, they decided that there was some help that they could possibly give to local public health. So, um, it's called, it's actually called the Public Health Excellence Shared Services Grant Program. So, um, when this came out in the spring, uh, in February, um, we were in the middle of doing our, uh, COVID vaccines in Uxbridge, so I had the ability to talk to multiple different health departments. So this is actually comprised of eight towns in this area. It is, um, Menden, it is also Blackstone, Millville, Hope Dale, Upton, Douglas, Northbridge, and Uxbridge that we're partaking in this. This does not, um, take away the board's authority as a health department, and this does not take away from any existing, um, work that is done by individual health departments. It's more to help, um, maybe have more of a regional look at things, fill in the gaps, enhance existing services, expand public health programs. So we, and this region was awarded, uh, $277,397. This will be able to allow us to hire, depending on how the group decides, at least one full-time inspector, a possible part-time inspector, and then a community at, you know, a community program, someone that could help us get words out on different programs that the Boards of Health are able to do. So part of the thing that we have to do is, we get, need a sign off from the Select Board and the Chairman of the Board of Health, so we're here to ask if the selectmen would be willing or are okay with the, the, the program that we're gonna be trying to work with.
Comment?
Go ahead, yep.
Just, just, um, a, a point of interest, it is not specifically to the eight, uh, eight towns that we are involved with, um, for us only. It is numerous different sections across the state, and Missy has more knowledge as to what the groups are, it's just the matter of the eight towns in our nucleus that we will be dealing with specifically, so I just wanted you to know that it's, it's, it's all over the whole state, it's not just specifically us.
Right, there's, there's actually that I know of at least three or four other collaboratives. There's one that's called the Greater Boroughs, which is North Borough, West Borough, and South Borough are collaborating together. There is one out towards Lester, which Lester is the hub for that collaborative, and there's also one out by Webster with some of the surrounding towns in that area. For our collaborative, for our eight towns, Northbridge will be the lead town in this.
Okay. Um. I don't have any questions, I think it's important that clearly Board of Health has vetted this and it's bringing this to us because they feel it's important, and so that's what matters most to me. Lonnie, I don't know, oh, no, yeah, uh, Mr. Fickner would like to speak, go right ahead.
Greetings all. Uh, really just a question, and this may be more toward Missy, Missy, I'm just reviewing some of the documentation related to this. Is this what's also known as the P L, PH, the Partnership for Local Boards of Health, is that correct?
Yes, so according, what, what the state calls it is the Excellence Shared Services Grant, but for us, it's that Blackstone Valley Partnership for Public Health. That's what the, our areas grant is going to be called, if, when you're talking to the state.
Okay, so along with that, I just noticed, and I don't know if the Select Board has had a chance to see it, there was a a draft copy of what was called the Inter-Municipal Agreement, the IMA, that would have to be signed by the Select Board, is that correct, Missy?
Yes, but right now, what, we're also working with CMRPC, they're the ones that are actually, has put all the paperwork together for the eight towns, and actually the other collaboratives in central Mass. And what they need right now by July 1st is a, like a, uh, July 31st, I'm sorry, is more of a commitment letter. And then the, when the time comes for the agreement, yes, there'll be agreement that will be signed between the Select Board and the Board of Health of Menden with the, uh, town of Northbridge, their Select Board and their, um, Board of Health.
So I noticed on the, uh, IMA, uh, if that holds true to, uh, moving forward, there were some requirements that were highlighted at that time that were, um, for the quote-unquote "town" to be responsible for, which I guess would be the Select Board. Do we know if that will, is changing moving forward? Is that pretty much gonna be the outline that the Select Board will have to consider?
This is, this is done by, as far as I know, the Board of Health. So, we would, we are actually, and we'll talk about it after we're done with this meeting, on our meeting, but there is actually a board-like region too, that we belong to for emergency preparedness, and each town will have a representative sitting at the table figuring out who to hire and what their job responsibilities will be. And I think if anything, it's more that it will be with the town of Northbridge's Select Board, as they are the lead agent.
Yeah, 'cause it looked like one of the responsibilities might have been anyway, on that draft copy, might have been that, uh, when it referred to the town, and only because the signature at the bottom of it was reflective of a Select Board signature, that they actually might have needed to be involved in appointing those board members to the oversight board? But we think that possibly that might have changed?
That probably has changed, because my understanding through Connor at CMRPC, it will be the health departments that will oversee the, the board.
Okay, great. Thank you, that's all I had.
Okay. Any questions from my fellow board members?
I just wanna say it sounds like a great opportunity for us, and, uh, great work, nice job, Missy, thank you for going through all the extra steps, especially in the middle of while you were trying to handle over in Uxbridge, and, uh, look forward to seeing it through to fruition.
Very good. So, I'll take a motion to sign the Blackstone Valley Partnership for Public Health Grant Agreement.
So moved.
Second. We still don't have Mr. Morali, so all in favor?
Tenny, oh, aye.
Real aye. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, and if you guys have any questions, or as things progress, and I have, we have more things to let you know about it, we definitely will bring it to you.
Very good.
Thank you, have a great night, guys.
You too.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Um. Well, this is a big topic that I really think we need to all be here for, so we're missing one of our board members.
Can you call in on the phone, like just dial in?
Yeah, let me suggest that. Please bear with us. Do we have all of the, uh, school committee members from, from the Menden side? See? Sean?
Yeah, Mark, I think, I think, I think Eric and Sean are on, and I think, uh, we've got Joe and Maureen with us. And Jay, fire.
Yeah, the list is a little long, so I'm gonna find everyone, thank you. Cindy, how are you? Got Mr. Morali back.
Yes, I'm back on, if you can, I can hear you loud and clear.
I can hear you, great. All right, I didn't wanna start without you, Mike, 'cause, you know, this is like a really important, uh, matter, right?
I appreciate, I appreciate it, Mark. Sorry for that, I just lost the connection, and luckily, my buddy has a hotspot, so I was able to reach you.
Sounds good, okay, so, um, and discussing with, as we're moving forward here in this budget process with the school, we are at a point right now where the school committee has decided that the next step will be to hold a joint town meeting. And I know that in our community in the past, that has been something no one really wants to, to partake in. Uh, I think there's, in my mind, strong feeling that joint town meeting will be more detrimental beyond just financial issues, and will, um, hurt relations between Menden and Upton and the school district, and, you know, I think that really should be a last resort. And so, we've been talking around the ideas of how we avoid that, and for me, I think that we really need to be in a position where Upton is at the table with Menden and the school committee in having these discussions, and, and this budget process has been a little different, where Upton has made adjustments to their budget to, uh, manage to come up with the funds to provide this to the school without an override, and therefore, the discussion in Upton has been very different from the discussion here in Mendon. And so I believe that this year is not the year that we should be moving in the direction of a joint town meeting, if at all possible, and we should look to adjust our budget by making cuts and ask the school committee to do the same in making cuts there, to manage to get us all through this fiscal year, and continue to talk towards some resolution for the next budget, uh, cycle. And that really would require some, some deeper, uh, communication and more consistent communications between leaders here in Menden and Upton and the school administration and the school committee. And so, we're here tonight to really, as a board, talk through our, our thoughts and our feelings around this issue, and to provide the school administration, and we have a couple of the Menden School Committee members on the call here that are listening to our conversations, and kind of give them some guidance on what we're thinking, so that they can, can have those discussions in their meetings, so, um, with that, I'll, I'll open it to whoever on, on the Menden Select Board would like to speak. There must be something to say.
Well, I, I will, I'll say, Mark, that, that, and this is Mike Morali, that, uh-
Thank you.
You know, at this point in the process, it is, uh, still in, on the school committee to, uh, to, you, you know, to continue down this path of a joint town meeting, or, um, see if there's, uh, any place they can go for, for some funds, I know it's the end of the year, so I, I'm interested to know where their excess and deficiency account ended up. I also saw an article that, uh, the state legislature has found some money that they're gonna backfill into towns, cities and towns with things like, uh, uh, better reimbursement for regional transportation, and I'm wondering if there's any movement on the school committee's ask, 'cause it seems to me that would be the next step for us, and certainly, um, I know the law says that we have to go to a joint town meeting now, but I think if the school committee was to lower their ask, um, you know, then it would be up, it would, it would be, uh, advisable for us to, to find a way to, to bridge whatever gap still remained, and then of course, we would have to go to a, to a, a special town meeting to, uh, to move the money from wherever we found it to the school budget, realizing it's a temporary fix for this year, and looking, just like you said, Mark, to, you know, to come up with a more permanent solution next year. But again, I still think it's, it's, it's something that the, the school committee has to do. Um, you know, we've certainly prepared the unions and things to know that, you know, if this was to go to a joint town meeting, and if it was to um, pass there, and we had to come up with the 800, 800,000 plus, um, without an override, we would have to make some deep cuts into the town side of the budget. Um, but again, the next step, I think, has to be, uh, the school committee, um, lowering their ask if we're to, to, to make anything else except to forge ahead with a joint town meeting.
Yeah, I think that, you know, there's a couple of outstanding questions, and, and there's been some answers, but, um, there's a kind of a whirling question around, are we okay to move forward with the idea that we could resolve this without a joint town meeting at this point through our own special town meeting, should the school committee, uh, reduce their ask to a level that regardless of what it is, we're, we're still gonna be making, making cuts to our budget, and that is a partner, we're, we're gonna partner with the school in that sense, that cuts will be happening on their side as well as the town side, with the understanding that we're all working towards, um, some resolution for FY23. So, you're right, Mike, uh, that it, it is really in the school committee's hands at the moment, but we, we will be working closely with them through the process, I think. Before we go with some questions, Lonnie, do you have any comments?
Yeah, 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 absolutely, um, I, I, and the, we definitely need to hear from the school as far as what's going on, but as far as a number, I mean, clearly, the Menden voters have, have told us twice, no, we don't wanna give that extra money, right? They should, it should've, could've, would've before, maybe that we should've reduced, the, 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 the amount could've been reduced before they, before we went back to the second ballot, but we, they didn't, and, and we're here where we are now, but we've said no twice, so where, how, how do we, as, as members of, of the Menden Select Board, sit here and say that, okay, because the town said no, now we'll go against everything they've said just to avoid a joint town meeting? I don't wanna go to a joint town meeting just as much as the next person. But at this point, they've said no twice, we have no, no number, and maybe the school committee's gonna give us a new number tonight, I don't know. Uh, we, we, maybe we can defer to that, uh, and, and I'll wait. But if it's anything more than like $150,000 additional, then we're at a point where we have to make reductions where the townspeople of Menden didn't tell us to do that. Now, we can go back to another special town meeting and ask again, but this is, this is very frustrating on our part, and I'm sure it's just as frustrating on the other side. But what happens next year when Upton, if, if we are to pass and Upton now has to override this next year, because that was their plan? Now, what do we do at that point? Do we go back to another joint town meeting? Because we wanna give more, or, or whatever it may be, so just very, very, uh, this is a, a difficult decision to be, to be making here, uh, based upon what the Menden voters told us.
Well, I think you're right, I think that what, what, in my mind, right, the, the vote at the ballot in regards to the school funding, to me, says no increased taxes, but it doesn't necessarily say to me that they don't want the money to go to the school, it's just about the tax increase. Maybe I'm correcting that a little far, but, um, I just feel like going to a joint town meeting this year is not the answer. I think we need Upton to be on the same page as Menden and the school district in the sense that we all have a stake in this game, and Upton right now is not in the same position as Menden, and so it's difficult to go to a joint town meeting when one, one community really doesn't necessarily care if Menden gets, I, I mean, I'm sure they do care, because how could you think that it was okay for a community to, to have to cut 800,000 out of their budget? Essentially, it would be a cell of a, of a community, and our town government would be decimated, but why don't we, um, Mr. Nicholson has his hand up, hear from the school committee member on some thoughts on that end.
Uh, very good, Mark, I hope you can hear me.
Very good, Mark. I hope you can hear me. I turned my camera on as well. So a couple of comments from, from what you opened with, Mark. I, I think, now I can only speak for myself, but as I have conversations with the school committee, I think we echo very strongly the, the sentiment that you have about not wanting to go to joint town meeting. I think that to us, that is a, that is a, a facility of last resort. And it's something that we, because we had the votes turn out the way they did and we've got a conflict between the towns. That is something we have to put on the calendar, but we would strongly advocate and work very hard toward coming up with a settlement between, between Mendon and the school district and Upton as well. You're right that we need to all work together on this and I, and I have a feeling we need to be working much more closely for the coming year. I think there's going to be challenges as we, as we go into twenty twenty-three budgeting and challenges about how we are allocating the money to different activities across the school district and both towns. So I think this is, you know, Upton, Upton has managed their budget for this year for the school request, but as people might not know in Mendon, part of that was in one-time funds. So they're going to have to reconcile their budget as well next year. So we recognize on the school committee that we've got, we've got some, some planning to do and we've got some, some close communication to do with both towns to get this done. So now in, in response to the, to the idea that, that it's up to the school committee to give a number, I think what we, what we have discussed to this point and the school committee and the school have been really crunching numbers because Mike is right, there's been some changes in, in the accounting at the state, the closeout of the school district's books, things have changed. So I think we've, we, the eight hundred and three thousand dollar number that we had requested originally, I think we can reduce that safely. We can start to look at a target of, of four hundred thousand dollars instead of the eight hundred and three thousand. And I think that's a, that's a very good starting point for any discussions we have now. And if, if the town is able to start discussing what their capabilities are to, to support the school for this year, I think we can start discussing it further in tomorrow night's school committee discussion as well. And please understand, we've got a lot of, we've got a lot of number crunching to do here and a lot of trying to set our own priorities because we've got some, some urgent priorities as well. So, so with that, I'll, I'll hand it back to your discussion.
Thank you.
Mark, can I, can I just, can I have a question? Of that, of that four hundred and change reduction, how much was additional state funding?
So I have, I have Jay on the line here. We have, we have some, some dollars that have been identified just, I believe, just yesterday from transportation cost reduction. So there's, there's a number of different areas where, where the balance of the books and the, the transportation reduction have taken effect. But quite frankly, we still have some discussion to work out exactly where that number stands. I think we're giving you a target here. So we've got some, some space to decide what we want to do in terms of priorities and budget.
So, okay, so, all right, but there should be a clear number that the state has identified. What is that number?
A number for what, Lonnie?
You just said, okay, you're, the target's four hundred. Of that four hundred reduction, how much of it is, you said some was from closing of the books and some was from state.
Portions of it are from, are from taking away from our priorities. Portions of it are for transportation costs, which I believe is a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Try Jay can verify that if that's correct.
Yeah. So the, the state conference committee budget was approved and that number for, for regional transportation was increased, right, Jay?
Yeah, the, yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to jump in here. Yes, the conference committee budget has us up about a hundred and eighty-five thousand in transportation reimbursement. I believe that bill is on the governor's desk. I don't think the governor would reduce that again at this point, but you never know. In answer to your question, Lonnie, about how we get to a target of four hundred for Mendon, the school district would be actually cutting their budget by around eight hundred and fifteen thousand, maybe even nine hundred thousand. So what will help offset some of that is the transportation reimbursement. As far as closing out FY twenty-one, I'm in the process of working on that now, but I probably won't have a final figure until mid-August. But it looks good. I can tell you that, that, you know, there were certain things that we realized in the last couple of weeks that didn't get spent that we thought would. One of the biggies is transportation for out-of-district tuition where we had a lot of kids that just didn't go and stayed home. So some of that will help offset things as well, but the reality is that the school district would have to cut eight hundred fifty, nine hundred thousand. It would require Mendon to kick in around four hundred and that possibly could even be less as we go through this process, which I'm going to try to do over the next couple of days. But I would agree with you, Mark, in your comment earlier that I believe the rejection at the ballot vote was more of a no new taxes thing that we don't want to give the school mon, money. I don't know that for sure, but that was my sentiment is that people just don't want their tax bill to go up this year, especially coming out of a pandemic. But all in all, I think the, the purpose of trying to do this is there has to be some kind of a compromise between and the school district where we both sacrifice something in order to get us to where we're at. You know, I've just done some quick math here and it looks like, you know, three hundred and fifty, four hundred thousand on the town side is about a one percent reduction. The eight hundred and fifty, nine hundred for us is about a two percent reduction based on our budgets. I think the town's budget's around twenty-three million, if I'm correct. Our budget, you know, initially proposed was around thirty-nine million. I realize percentages don't mean a lot because the lower you go, the percentages become higher. The question is if that target for the town of Mendon is in the four hundred thousand range, how does Mendon do that?
Well, that's for us to figure out and then go to the, the ballot or go to the special town meeting voters to finalize. But I know Kim has wanted to speak, so if we could just give her a moment, I'm gonna bump in, Kim.
Sure. I, I have a couple of quick comments. Sorry. Just, I appreciate Sean's comments about working together in the future and rebuilding relationships and doing all of that, which is entirely necessary. And but, you know, as a person who works daily with the town's budget and knows the numbers better than anyone, I, I can't stress enough how we can't be using comparative percentages about what this means to the school's budget or cutting equally as compared to the town's budget. I think it's important for people to understand that when we started this, this isn't a shock that we're here. We, the town, the Board of Selectmen from December have had the same budget in place. And we said at that time that if the school's request was going to be over a certain amount, it was going to have to be from an override. That hasn't changed. And it wasn't, that's not based upon preference. That's based upon service level that we require to deliver. And so I can appreciate that cuts have to be made on both sides. I get it. But at this point, I'm more, I'm more aligned with Lonnie's thinking in the sense of the only budget that's actually passed by the Mendon voters at this point is the town's budget at town meeting. And the residents twice have said no to the school's override. Now, I, again, I can appreciate both Jay and Mark's opinion that that is a vote more about no new taxing. It's not about the school's vote, but I can tell you that we've certainly received an, I don't know, dozens of comments or, you know, commentary from residents over the last couple of weeks that their vote that was cast that they now feel that is being basically ignored was a vote towards the school's budget and at no point did anybody think that they wanted the town's budget reduced. So I've just, as the person who is in the last line, I, I respect all the opinions here about where we're going to go and work together and get there, but from a process standpoint, I can say that I'm disappointed that we're here because we, I, I don't think this is, I mean, I know this is the process, but I just can't believe that it's the, then I mean, Sean used the term settlement. If we were, if we were making a settlement, I mean, that's, we're not, we haven't lost in the court. We actually won twice based upon the votes. And so I'm just saying, compromise, yes, but we've told you from the beginning and even a number at four hundred thousand dollars, four hundred or eight hundred thousand to the town of Mendon's budget is catastrophic. It's not, our budget is tiny. We have forty-three FTEs entirely. Create a four-day-a-week town hall. We will lose depart services entirely with these cuts. And I don't think anybody in Mendon voted for that. So that's all I'm going to say about the opinion piece of managing it. Obviously I will support whatever the boards want to do is for the town.
Yeah.
Mark, may I speak?
Yeah, can I, if I may, just
Yep.
add something, sorry. You know, I think that I, I definitely understand that the perspective of both select, select person, Cineo and, and County Administrator Newman. But I really feel strongly that the board is elected to, to lead in situations like this. And I really worry about leaving it up to a joint town meeting where emotions run high and where special interests can get in the way of clarity. And so if we can minimize the impacts to both the school and our community, we should take the opportunity to do so now as we continue towards the broader issue and addressing the larger concerns that we all have in regard to school funding and all of our budgets. And something that really has been missing in this process is what we used to do with the multi-board meetings where we were all at the table having these discussions and ensuring that communication was, was clear amongst all parties involved in these budget talks. That's something we haven't had. And I think that's needs to happen before we put ourselves in the position of a joint town meeting. So if at all possible, we should attempt to avoid that despite the fact that town budget will be cut and we will lose entire departments, whether it's eight hundred thousand or four hundred thousand or less than four hundred thousand. We're still talking about cutting large segments out of our budget. And the voters and the taxpayers are aware of that and are paying attention. And so we're going to have to have those tough conversations and make those hard decisions now to minimize the large, the impact to both our town and to the school. So I know we don't all like that and no one likes these conversations, but we need to, we need to have them and we need to try to minimize the impact here.
So, so I would, I
Okay, so, Mark, I, I'm sorry, Lonnie, go ahead.
I'd, I'd like to add that we just were told we're not going to get a number until the end of August, a real number, right? We have, we have a, a, a number that we can shoot for, but we don't have a real number until August because the books won't even be closed. So why don't we move the joint town meeting out? Let's get these real numbers on the table so we know exactly what we're talking about and not have targets and this and that where we're just mincing and, and mashing and, and, and we need to work with real numbers.
Yeah, I do think that one ask that comes out of this meeting to the school and the committee is that they consider to move the, the joint town meeting date out because I think there's some moving parts here that we really need to get a handle on and we're down to less, about three weeks out for that meeting. And so I think it would be great if they could have that conversation and, and move the date out. I know that there's been a lot of discussing around the date and the importance of doing it sooner rather than later, but as you said, Lonnie, there's some, some things we really need to get a handle on to try to address this and try to avoid the, the joint town meeting. So yeah, I would, I would agree with those sentiments of, of moving the date.
So, so if I could,
Go ahead, Sean.
If I could, just in, in response, Lonnie, I, I concur with you. I wish that the, I wish that the state could come back with numbers more quickly as, as Jay reflected, we don't even have a signature from the governor yet on funds that we've just, just put on the table. There are a lot of things that, that we are sacrificing by pushing this date out further and further. The teachers that have been given pink slips already because we don't know whether we can afford them are looking for other jobs. That's, that's distressing to us. You know, there's, there's a lot of things that are in our interest to rectify more quickly. We just don't have the details at this point. That's why we have to kind of, you know, I, I joke that it's like jumping into a swimming pool from a diving board without knowing that there's water in the pool. You have to make your best guess at where this number is going to land. Yeah, I appreciate that you guys need the exact numbers. I get that, but we're going to have to make an estimate here before we have the conclusion if we're going to make this all work. The other thing I would just, I, I want to make sure that at least from my point of view, I can't speak for all the school committee members. They speak for themselves. But I'm telling you right now, my whole frame of mind has always been to remain as positive as I possibly can about the management of the town and the management of the town budget. That is not something that I should be criticizing or complaining about. The town should have every right to look at, at the details of how the school operates and the requests that it's making. That's the prerogative of the town. But I think we should just be cognizant that we got here because we didn't manage the situation correctly. It's not a time to argue about why that was done or whose responsibility it is or whose fault it is. The time right now is to, to start discussing the future and how we're going to get ourselves out of this situation today. And then discuss a pretty in-depth discussions about budgeting for the following year. So I would just try to remain positive and try not to let our, our more emotional instincts take over the conversation. Thank you.
Mark, Mark, can I add something?
Yep.
In this specifically to what Lonnie was saying, the fact that we won't have a definitive how much we're going to close out, we're, you know, E and D won't be certified until probably October at the earliest. But I believe the school committee can give a number to the Mendon Select Board and the Mendon folks within the next couple of days. This is what we're looking at trying to do based on our, our reducing things and some kind of a compromise. So I, I think, you know, kicking the can down the road, you got to remember, school opens in six weeks. We'd like to try to open with a, as full of staff as we're going to be able to have as opposed to the staff that we have right now with all of these layoffs. So I, you know, kicking it down the road just puts it off further and further. I think, I think we need to move quicker and not slower.
But Jay, would you, would you agree that maybe moving the joint town meeting date out a little bit would be okay? I mean, I know, clearer the better, but we've got some things to.
Yeah. So my, my preference on this, and this is just me alone, is that we come to some kind of a number that Mendon feels it can manage and the school committee feels it can manage as far as reductions on both sides. And that goes to a special town meeting, which puts the, that means you don't need the joint town meeting at all. You know, could, could, could they move it back a week or so? Sure, they probably could. The question is, you know, if Mendon has to go to a special town meeting and that's got to be probably three weeks out from tonight at the earliest, that automatically pushes things back a little bit. But I, it's just, I think it's a matter of coming up with an idea of what we can do to make this work. And I, you know, I, I fully realize that cutting, if the town had to come up with four hundred thousand, they're going to have to reduce something else to make that happen. And I don't want to see that happen where we're shutting down complete town departments or closing the library or anything like that. You know, I, but you guys know the budget better than I do. I know the school budget. You guys know the, the town budget and where you potentially could identify some of the funds to compensate for this. I know that many towns throughout the state are using their, a, the Biden bucks to try and offset some of this stuff. And I still feel that that's got to be an option that's looked at. I know it's a one-time option that kicks the can down the road, but that's basically what we're doing right now is kicking the can down the road till next year.
Yeah. I mean, I, I don't think, in my mind, I think those, those. Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think, in my mind, I think those, those dollars could be utilized towards bettering our infrastructure to, to improve economic development so that we're not continuously in the situation of taxing the residential taxpayers more and more. I mean, that money is is one time and that we should target it towards things that are really important in terms of non-operational needs. But that's just me and I, I understand what you're saying. Um.
How much, Mark, how much, how much money are, is, is the so-called Biden bucks?
Well, I've heard it's about, it could be up to about 1.8 million. I mean, the other piece of this is we don't have the money at this point. It's not, not in our wallet.
One, 1.8 million to the town of Mendon?
Yeah, that's what we've been hearing. Kim, you have, you've heard that as well.
Yeah.
What's the expectation, what's the expectation of, of that getting, like, when would it get here?
We don't know. Kim, do you know?
Time frame is unknown.
Right.
But my understanding is, if, if I could just, I, I spoke a little bit to, to, to our um congressman's office and, and the issue i- isn't even about when it's going to get there because as, as you know, Jay, um, we may pass the budget, but we don't have to come up with all the money um right up front, right? And this is all a, a, you know, a process, but it, it more importantly, I, I still don't think there's any, any firm information about how we can use the money, what we can use the money. I mean, i- ideally, you know, maybe we could take something and move it to infrastructure and then we'd have to have a special to move that money, but, but we don't know if we can do that. And, and again, it all comes back to what both of my colleagues said. You, you know, we, we need to have a, a, a concrete number. And obviously, you know, that the, the school committee asked for 803,000 that we were going to go for an override for, which is, I, I guess is an estimate too. So I, I still think that, you know, I, I know we need 14 days to schedule a special town meeting at least. You know, we have to get the warrants out to everybody. So the school committee really, if we're gonna do anything, n- n- needs to move this uh, the date of the joint town meeting and they have to come up with a concrete um number, even if it's a guess, but they have to have a number that they want us to, to work with.
Well, respectfully, I think, I think right now we're looking at 400 as the number. So um, if you guys, if the town is willing to come back with a number of their own and do the same kind of due diligence that we did to come up with that number, then we've got ourselves a start of a conversation.
I'll take this one.
Respectfully, I think, I think we're, we're saying it's in the town's court now.
What number could the town, it's, the school board has the authority to certify a number, recertify a number. The town has given you the number that they need to operate at, which was the budget number. I mean, if you're asking us to provide you with a voluntary number of how much we could potentially cut, I mean, anything over $150,000 is an override. It's the same message from December. And so.
I think honestly, honestly, I'm sorry, Kim, but that's not productive. Right? If you, if you can't come up with an, under the spirit of our conversation, we're talking about cutting each other's budget and cutting the services that we provide to the community. That's the spirit of our conversation right now and the school committee is trying to do that. So please come up with a number as a town. I know you've got discussions, discussions to go through.
Obligation to come up with a number, nor should we based upon what the budgets, the school's budget operational needs are. You should have provided us with that number, which you did.
So there's a choice that we have here. Um, in, in the, the way that this works is uh, Upton has passed a budget. Upton has passed a very, uh, has accepted the budget that we gave to them. In order to reconcile that budget, the state provides for a mechanism. That mechanism is called first, again, going to the town that, that rejected the budget and seeing what they think again. They've, Mendon rejected that budget. Then we go to joint town meeting. If you are recommending, Kim, that we go to joint town meeting, then let's go to joint town meeting. But I would strongly recommend.
Talk to council too.
I would strongly recommend that we come up with an arrangement whereby we can both survive the next year and try to come up with a plan for 2023.
I have a lot of thoughts about that, but I'm just gonna, just gonna, go to the council part, which is, I wanted to make sure I added this in this meeting tonight before I forget, which is right now, we've asked for, we've, we've had a, a, an opinion given to us by council about what the actual steps are regarding town meeting. We did receive a summary, thank you, of what your council has said to you, what they think the steps are and what Desi is. What we would actually request, since our council has been trying to get in touch with your council, is that we also get an opinion from your council so that actually agree what the process is. Because right now, some interpretation on our side is that we can only go to joint town meeting. And I, I I don't have an opinion about whether joint town meeting is the, is the right way or in the wrong way to go. That's not my say, but I will say that our budget, again, um, I mean, has been the same.
We, we've heard this already and, and quite frankly, I have a response to it, but I'm not going to say it because I'm trying to look to the future and I'm trying to be positive about your perspective and the town's perspective.
All right, so we're talking about the legal process here. Is some, some disagreement or not even disagreement, but just um, our council hasn't been able to connect with school council on this discussion. And so we want to make sure that our council and school council have that discussion regarding process so that we're all in agreement that we can move forward with a special town meeting option potentially. So Cindy, do you want to just update us what you've found and maybe give some insight there? You're on mute.
Mark, I've not been able to find anything different than I've told you in my understanding and, and which is consistent with what we've heard from Desi and what I have heard when I initially reached out um in, earlier to Roberta De Petri. And I don't necessarily think the school committee's council is saying something completely different. The process as far as I am aware and anything I have heard or seen in writing from anyone in authority is that the school committee has to recertify a new budget. Whatever that number is, that's gotta be put forward. And once that number is certified, my understanding is it goes to joint town meeting. Now, is there a way, once you have that number, to perhaps call a special before getting to town meeting? I'm not 100% sure. I'm not 100% sure what that does for you. But what I'm at a loss is, I don't know how the town can come up with a budget above what the town meeting has authorized um, without another town meeting. Because the select board can sit there with all the tools at their disposal and come up to what they think is a reasonable alternative budget to what was proposed, but they can't make that decision. And you need to have a budget for them to work with. So the town meeting, if they decide to go that route, if they can go that route, can look at what is before them now as opposed to what was before them before and evaluate all their options. Do we want cuts if this is the money? Do we want to have an override if it's only this amount? It's like, but without knowing that number, there is no way for the town that I'm aware of to, to do what the school committee sounds like they're asking them to do, which is to give the school committee a number. Um, and, and I'm more than happy to talk to anybody's council and be educated, but I, I as town council don't know how the selectmen, select board, I apologize, can sit here and give the school committee what they're asking for. Now, do I think there's a lot of room for everybody from both towns and the school committee to sit down and toss around ideas about what they think might make sense? Yeah, I do. I don't think it has to be a number that's a fiat from the school committee, but I don't think the town of Mendon as a political subdivision, number one, has the authority to give you a number or two under the process that that's the next step. Now, can they be involved in the number a school committee certifies? Sure. Do I think everyone should try to be involved and cooperatively come up to a number that the school committee thinks it can live with and that, you know, without any representations, the town's think, we think this has a chance of passing? That's all I think until someone can explain to me how otherwise it can be done, that we can go forward at this point.
And Cindy, that's what we're asking for, actually, is just to have a discussion about what can work.
That I misunderstood what I heard you asking for.
All right, so let me um, let me provide some clarity here, right? So we're in a position where any number, basically any number above nothing is a cut to our budget, right? So we're at a point where we're talking about both of us making concessions and, and any, anything above the number we've already approved at our annual town meeting is going to result in cuts to our budget. And so in my mind, if we're both gonna be making cuts, the ask is that the school committee comes back with a number that exhibits that the school is making cuts as well to their level service budget. And we're then tasked with deciding our next step. So I know the number of 400 has been tossed around. If that's where the school is comfortable in making the cuts and that's as far as you're willing to go, then the, it comes back to the select board and we have that discussion and we say, can we make those cuts as well here? And do we go to a special town meeting and try to resolve this through that process? So I, I think it's important to note, Sean, that we're not, it's hard for us to, to say, well, we want, I mean, we want it to be nothing, but we just can't, we're not, we also know that that's not possible. So we're, we're leaving it to the school committee and trusting that you're gonna give us the absolute lowest number that you're able to do.
Yeah, and, and I, I, I understand and, and I, I definitely, definitely sympathize with the effort that it takes to come up with uh any types of cuts for this. We've got to go through the same process ourselves and we're in the middle of that. Um, but.
And we have a list already of, of up to 800 plus thousand in cuts. I mean, we've, we've, we've established that list already.
Understood.
Doesn't look good, so.
Yeah, so we're, we're in the same process ourselves. So, you know, and, and it's difficult to have these discussions uh considering open town, you know, open meeting law. It's difficult to have these discussions in private to come up with something, but essentially that's what we're, we're saying. We're in the process of, of examining our budget. 400 is the number we currently have. If you have some, some number you could, uh, you could play with and we could work with, then we would examine that and try to come up with how it fits the priorities of the school and how we're going to reduce our services as well. That's what we're asking for.
So, Mark, I just want to say one thing, you know, so I think we've heard two numbers tonight, right? So we have a target that's 150. Your target is 400. So we have a gap in there that needs to be looked at. So.
I'm sorry, what was the 150? Well, I'm sorry, where did that come from, Lonnie?
Just saying that that, that's a, that's a target number that, that would be, I've, I've said it and Kim said it both, 150K. So if you, if you were just throwing around target numbers, and I'm not saying these numbers are actually the tone, just saying we're throwing around target numbers right now. Yours is 400, we'll look at it, we're at 400, right? This is the, this is the process that we gotta go through. You look at it if it's 150, you know what I mean? And then maybe it's somewhere in the middle, uh, uh, whatever. I, again, I don't.
Yeah, this is gonna be difficult for both of us. Lonnie, I, I agree, I agree with what you're saying, Lonnie.
Yeah, in the spirit of trying to make it happen, let's, let's work through it as quickly as possible, right? From both angles and, and that way we can see what it is. And if it comes down to, we have to go to joint town meeting, then we do. But I, again, I know none of us want it, but anyway, I'm, I'm done.
No, I, I completely agree with your sentiments, Lonnie. That, that's, that's kind of where we're, where we're at, where it's all of these, all of these things become painful discussions and we're both going to be having them. So let's, let's constantly stay in communication about where we're feeling the pain and, and uh, you know, and try to come up with a number that's, that's workable.
All right, so Jay has his hand up.
Um, yeah, two comments. One, in regards to the process of a joint town meeting or a special town meeting. Everything I've been told as well is that you really, the typical way is you go to the joint town meeting and then after that, the individual towns have to go to a special town meeting to make the appropriation that just, because the budget is now approved. But one thing that was stressed when, when I talked to Mike Long and when I talked to the Department of Ed is that the school committee always has the option of accepting whatever budget has been approved at that point to avoid a joint town meeting. Which tells me that if the town went to a special town meeting and approved a budget that had some kind of increase, the school committee can then say, yes, we accept that. That's what we're gonna certify at or we're certified at that amount. And then you avoid the joint town meeting. Um, in regards to the number, I know the school committee's meeting tomorrow night, I think, you know, maybe the next step is that the school committee has to look at where we are with the budget and what we're, what we feel we can and can't live with and without and provide back to the uh, to you guys, you know, this, this is the target number that you're gonna have to look at. Um, I think that that's reasonable at this point, um.
But respectfully, respectfully, um, you know, we've been talking a lot um about the 400 number. We need you guys to consider what a number would be. If, if the 150 is the first number, that's, I understand.
Well, you know, and the other thing is we have already spelled out what the 2.1 million is that we have to cut. So I think that's out there and everybody knows what those positions are. You know, you said the town has developed a list for 803,000, but if we're looking at a number in the 400 range, what does that number look like? I mean, you must have prioritized your list of reductions. So you do have an idea of what would have to be cut to come up with 400,000 if that was a number you had to come up with. Am I correct on that?
Yeah. I mean, we haven't, as a board, been able to have that discussion yet because we don't really want to put out any information that is going to, you know, alter, not alter, but we don't want to provide data that's not quite accurate yet based on things that aren't even real. I mean, we can talk about, we can talk about the 803,000 in cuts because that's a real thing. That's, that has, that has a lot of potential. Now we're talking about a $400,000. Well, that number's been floated but hasn't really come from the school committee as the number. And so it's hard for Mendon as a town to tell the school committee what your number should be. Because no matter what, we're talking about cutting. So again, we're asking that the school committee comes to us with their absolute lowest. Because again, no matter what, we're going to have to make cuts. So I could say to you, 150,000, well, we're still making cuts. But is that so drastic to the school that it just doesn't work for you?
And so, Mark, I, I, again, I'm gonna reiterate this again. So, and this, this goes back to what we've talked about. Um, we're both in the process of making cuts to the budget that we had planned. How do we make those cuts together? Both of us are going to experience pain. If we come to you with something that is not amenable to you, then you're going to come back to us and say that we can't do that. We have to have a process by which we can both start making commensurate cuts and then come up with a number that will work for us both. Because we can't do it any other way.
Here's the thing.
Right? It's, it's gonna be painful for both of us. We both have to make cuts. It's going to be hard. But I, I think we need to work together on this. It's painful, but I know we can do it.
Okay. This is the point in the process where Mendon's budget has been approved. The school's budget has not been approved. Okay, so we need the school to provide the number. Because whatever. because whatever that number is going to be at this point is when we take action as a select board to say, here's the, here's the concession number from the school and that will be our concession number as well. Because if it's 400,000, that's Mendon's concession number. We have to go back to a special town meeting and it'll be 400,000 in cuts if that's what the select board decides to do, which I think we're, we're willing to go down that route. That's what I'm kind of hearing here, right? So. Our, our budget is done. The, the voters of Mendon have set our budget. So now we were waiting for the school committee in this discussion. We're saying we're, we're willing to work together to avoid our, a joint town meeting, but we need the school committee to come back with a number that's not 800,000, right?
So, uh, so at this point, I think, I think we should take it offline because we'll go around in circles forever on this. We need to talk it out.
I mean, Jay, do you see what I'm saying here in the process wise? I mean, this is up to the school now to, we've said we're willing to work together, right? And so now we need the school committee to provide a reduced number that we.
So, so with all due respect, Jay is speaking on behalf of the school committee. I am speaking on behalf of the school committee.
And, and I'm going to ask you to stop speaking because this is my meeting.
Yes, except that we are.
Jay, thank you. Jay, please respond to my question.
Um, so two things. One, I can tell you that in order to, if 150 was the town's number, the school district would have to cut 1.3 million out of its budget. So it's a good portion of the cuts. It's fairly sizable. Um, I understand what you're saying and I think this is something that the school committee needs to discuss tomorrow night. You know, and then we have to come to some sort of compromise. And then if turns out that 400 is the number, then that's the number. If it's less or, you know, whatever, that's something at least to give you a working piece of information. Um, and you know, if it turns out that you, the town amended says, you know what? At that number, at 400,000, we're not willing to take that to the voters. Then we go to the joint town meeting and we'll deal with it at that level.
And that's all I'm saying.
Deal with it after the fact.
Right. We just need to, to, to be provided some, we, we have agreed to the fact that we are willing to, to make cuts to avoid joint town meeting. So it's the school committee's position right now to come back to us with those concessions. And then we decide as a town, are we willing to go to a special town meeting and try to resolve it that way, right? And so that's where we're at and it's just, it's just gonna be, I mean, we're, we're working together here. There's, I don't think that we're, we're not. We're saying we are willing to get this done together. We just need the school committee to provide the number. And we're talking about those numbers, but it is on the school committee's side. So Kim, you have something?
Yeah, I just, um, want to provide some feedback just from this week, which I actually, I, I want you to take to the school committee tomorrow because, um, you know, this week I met with all the staff, basically the unions, to talk about and notify them of potential reductions and I talked to all the department heads. And the number one question that came up, um, and some of them are on the call tonight, maybe they want to ask, but the number one thing that kept coming back was, why didn't the school committee lower the budget the second time for the second override vote? I don't think that's, I mean, I don't think that part's been communicated maybe like to the residents and that might be some of the reason that there, there's like this animosity. They don't understand why that happened. Um, and maybe if the school board addresses that more publicly, um, that would be helpful to moving this forward. I think it certainly would help with my staff understand how we got here because, um, one of the other questions is about, well, we're just starting now to, you know, prepare these numbers and look at these cuts. But the question I got again is why wasn't the budget reduced after the first override failed? And so I just think those things are the questions and I'm sure my board will tell you. Well, I would say, Jay, take it to the board and, and let them have a, make a statement and let it come back so that, that gets addressed and then we can move on from it.
I just don't know that that's gonna produce any sort of beneficial results at this point anyway, so.
It might not, but it, it's, it keeps coming up and it's really for them to do. I mean, it's, it's for them to take a position on or not. It's just, I think that will help some Mendon residents maybe come back into realizing why their increase might be necessary.
Okay. Any other comments? We have, uh, Dr. Maru's deck.
Hi, thank you, Mark. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, just a couple of things to, to, uh, ask to address Kim's question. I think there's a couple of key things that have not been in this discussion. One, the fact remains that for fiscal '21, every single penny or just about every single penny of the increase of the ask was put strictly to an override so that our budget was completely level funded by the town amended. I think it, to the, the key question that Kim just asked that she's getting from different departments, the school committee was very, very clear in its deliberation when they recertified the budget after the first failed override. And again, I'm not choosing sides here, I'm not choosing communities, but realize this is a two-town regional school district. And the Upton voters spoke very, very loudly and very clear to support the, in the ask from the regional school district. And I might add, because of minimum local contribution, the ask for Upton was significantly more than it was for Mendon. However, it was supported by Upton. So part of the deliberation that was made very, very clear by the regional school committee and the fact that in the deliberations through the budget subcommittee and then the larger regional school committee, we were very, very clear that the budget that was certified and recertified was not this pie in the sky budget that was just around wants. Rather, it was around essential needs. And the school committee was very, very thoughtful and very, very deliberate in, in stating that when the budget was recertified towards the end of May.
So, so I have a quick question. If it was very clear then, it was very clear when they recertified it, why isn't it very clear now?
I think to answer your question, Lonnie, it, it, it's a lot of people who maybe don't pay attention or don't engage and they get their news from Facebook. And unfortunately, there's been a lot of misinformation and a lot of conspiracy theory rather than looking back on what is factually accurate and what has happened through the process.
That's not, that's not what I'm asking. I'm asking if it was very clear that when the budget was, was built and it was very clear when the budget was recertified, why isn't it still as clear now to the school committee or, or to the administration or wherever it may be, that we would just go to joint town meeting with the exact same number? Why is it different now that we can reduce so much?
I, I, I really, I, I don't answer, I don't understand your question, Lonnie. What, what, what is unclear? I, I, I'm making, the point that I'm making about things being clear is I'm saying that the regional school committee was very, very clear in their mindset and their deliberation of why they recertified at the same exact amount.
So Lonnie, if I could sort of, I think what you're basically asking is why would the school committee now be willing to make some reductions when they weren't the first time around? And I think the answer to that is that we're looking to compromise at this point and sacrifice some of the things that we do feel are essential needs because we're not interested in devastating the town amended if we don't. That's not like what we wanna do here. And an 800, $3,000 hit without an override to support that will really cause a lot of damage to the town amended. We're not looking to do that. So now we're in the spirit of compromise.
And, and Mr. Chairman, if I can just add in here, the, the point from the very beginning was that that 803,000, if it was funded any other way but an override, was going to devastate the town. And clearly, Jay, I think you'd agree with me that what has changed is you didn't spend all the money that you anticipated in your budget and you're getting more reimbursement back from the state than you were going to and you're figuring those numbers out, which is where we're at. And that's why we come back to the same place in the circle that the school committee has got to come up with a new number of what they need or can live with. Regardless of how we got here, this is where we're at now. And I'm not gonna go to the, I can't go to the taxpayers and ask them to go to another town meeting until I have a concrete number that's been certified by the school committee. And my understanding is that it's somewhere between the 150. We're saying that we could come up with, without being too devastating in the 400,000 that you think that, uh, is, you know, a starting point for you to lower to. So it's somewhere in between there. But again, the school committee's gotta come up with that number, certify it and come to us. And then if you move the date of your, uh, joint town meeting to give us time to deliberate and then schedule a special, maybe we can get that done in the meantime. But again, it still has to come back to the school, the regional school committee coming up with a new certified number, um, moving forward.
Right. Can I, I'd like to address just one thing that I think people are, are referencing and going back to, which is the fact that Mendon, uh, level funded the school. And, and I know that looks like Mendon was maybe taking all the money for our town budget, but the reality is, uh, when we, when we understood that it was likely that the school, uh, request was going to require an override regardless, we felt that in order to, for Mendon to maintain level service, we needed to include the nu, the entire amount in the override so that Mendon would remain at level service and an override passing would provide the school with the budget that they needed. So we're now at a place where we recognize that, uh, neither of us are meeting level service and we are in this compromise mode here so that we can move forward with discussions with Upton including to, uh, move towards resolution for FY '23. Mr. Nicholson.
Yes, I just wanna clarify that, that this, that the town offered the school district, I believe it was $13,000 above last year.
Correct. Yeah, so a little more than.
That's, that's my clarification. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So, so slightly more than a level fund, but obviously that's, that's not making too much of a difference. But that was, uh, basically what we could do outside of ensuring that our budget was level service and then, uh, adding that to the, to the override, so. Any other comments? I don't, oh, hold on. Hands up, let's see. Oh, that was Sean. Okay. I don't see any other hands. Uh, any other comments from, oh, we have, excuse me, Christine Pratt.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
I've been looking at, at your budget as well. I'm, I'm a towns person. I've been here for 35 years. No children in the school, ever. Um, what I would like to say to you, ask you is, um, how quickly you could get a look at the numbers that were actually real for last year? So for '21, not looking at the budget for '22 as opposed to the budget for '21, could you look at the actual numbers for '21 to see if there were any, if there was any money in there that you could actually say, you know, we, we voted that last year, we've got that money somewhere and we could move that over? Just a thought, but I'm wondering if that might be possible, so I throw that in there for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Kim, do you wanna talk to that? You're muted.
I'm, I'm glad you asked that. Uh, we can, you know, we have a pretty good estimate of the FY '21 numbers, um, you know, even right now. And yes, definitely, we would look for room. I can tell you for the, I just answered a question in the chat, but I can tell you for the FY, for this, the '22, for the budget, um, we just, um, we have about, that Board of Selectmen, the, in addition to budget drivers, much like the school, at all, um, over what was from last year, based upon the previous year's budget, we have a very diligent FinCom that like, that goes line by line and pulls money, basically money that isn't spent. Um, we, we meet a lot. And so really, the town, the Board of Selectmen's adds to the budget were right around 100,000 total. So that's the number, one of the numbers we keep saying when it's about 100, 150 because that's all that we added. Um, that's the answer to that question. And I would just like to add to the previous conversation, the amount of money that the town had left at the last budget year, based upon the school's request, even with the override, was about $60,000 in working operation money to cover all of our costs because we did give so much last year to help the school reach their goal, including the override.
Yeah, I was actually referring to the money from the school. I'm sorry, I didn't even look at the town budget. I didn't, I didn't even look at the town budget. It was the school, the school budget.
I liked any questions about our budget, believe me. It's most of my life for six months of the year, so I'll take it, sorry.
No, but I, but I wondered because I thought like, well, the library was pretty much closed all year and there were certain things, so I wondered if there was money there. But I wasn't really looking there. I was really more looking at the schools to say, you know, was there some, or, 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 you know, was it really much more expensive to run the school last year than it was to run it the year before? That was the thought, but if it was less expensive and there was money that was left from what was approved last year, is there anything you could do with that? That was where my thought was for, for all of you.
Yeah, and I think that, and Jay could, um, confirm, but I, I think that that's where the, the E and D exits and deficiency number comes into play. Christine, I think that's really, that's monies that were approved that weren't utilized, right, Jay? So that's, that's where we cap.
That's, that's what I was referencing before is that, you know, the closeout of FY '21, the fiscal year is over, we still have bills coming in that are gonna get charged to FY '21 and that typically takes place throughout the month of July and even into the first and second week of August, that I've gotta charge back to FY '21. That's why I don't have an exact number. But, um, but one of the reasons that we're, we're coming forward and saying, yes, we could make, say, $850,000 in reductions is because I do feel there is gonna be funds from that year that we can carry over and apply to '22, much like we did when we closed out '20 to make '21 work. It's a similar process. E and D, you're right, E and D is the balance after it's all done, but that doesn't get certified till October or November, you know, way into the.
And that's exactly the same as us. Ours would be free cash, well, just so if anyone's listening, we don't actually get access to whatever we didn't spend or extra revenue we brought in until it's certified at its fall town meeting. So yeah, potentially in the future, right? We'd have access to using that money for things, but we won't in time for this budget.
Right.
Great. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, not seeing any other hands. So let's move on to, we have considered a special town meeting, but I think we're gonna hold on that because we would like some more clarity, right? Okay, great. So with that, we have executive session. Let me find my little language here. Uh, I moved center into executive session under purpose three, Mass. and Allah, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Mendon Town Hall Union, Local 272, Mendon Highway Department Union, Local 272, Mass. Coalition of Police Union, AFL-CIO, Local 188, Mendon Fire, to discuss open session would be detrimental to bargaining. Roll call vote is needed. We will reconvene.
Second.
Okay, all in together.
Tenio, aye.
Morali, aye.
Real aye.
So I don't think we have a se, a second link, so we should just wait.
Okay, thank you, everyone. We appreciate the conversation.
Honey. I wasn't talking. I wasn't talking to any of you, sorry.
Should we start recording?
Yeah, hang on, I'll stop the recording, I'll throw everybody else.